Okay, I would like to welcome everyone to the Village of Lansing Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, July 30th. Call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve.
I hoped I didn't miss any.
No, you didn't miss any.
I kept thinking, oh, suddenly it was like, oh.
Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. Oh, yeah, sorry. One other thing, yeah, sorry. So Jim is not with us tonight. He's home, he's not feeling well, but he is a voting member tonight, so there is that. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
That's all. But maybe you should mute.
For example, yeah, if you're gonna cough, Jim, go ahead and mute. I mean, you know.
Feel free.
Feel free to mute. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone to bring anything up, either online or in person that is not already on the agenda for tonight.
Susan Ainsley covering for the Board of Trustees.
Hey, Susan.
Hey. Hi.
Carla Varso, here as an observer for the community party.
Hey, Carla. Okay, hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period. Motion by Pat. Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is revocation of special permit number 2021-4516. Village of Lansing Planning Board will discuss the revocation of the Lansing Meadows Special Permit Number 2021-4516. This, we held a public hearing for over the span of multiple meetings, and we closed that two meetings ago, or at the last meeting?
Two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago. Mike, do you want to give us an update on that before we do anything else?
There is no update. Nothing's been done on the job. I spoke with Eric earlier this week. He can't join us this evening. He's attending his son's.
He's on there. He's on Jim.
He's not here in person, though.
Yeah, he's not here in person. He can only be, he can only call in because he's attending his son's wedding. But I spoke with him, and at this point, we're kind of waiting to see what the planning board wants to do with this. I'll let him speak to anything else other than that.
Mike, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm out west, sorry. I couldn't make the meeting, my son's wedding out here. And I don't really have any additional information to add. I know last meeting, we were taken off the agenda, so I don't have anything else to add right now at this time.
Okay. Natalie, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. So the planning board does have a resolution in front of them. It is lengthy. I am going to read through it all, because it is lengthy. I think it's an important thing. I know everybody wanted to be here when we discussed this, and I know Jim's sick and email is online, but at least, at least we're kind of all here, whether physically or online. But so this is the.
Hey, Mike, 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 can I interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Mike Scott, could you email me a copy of that?
I believe I did, but I can try to send you another one here in a minute.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing it. Thank you.
Any questions or any comments or anything from the board before I move on with the resolution? Okay. So this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Revocation of Special Permit Number 2021-4516. Again, this is lengthy, so whereas a this matter involves special permit number 2021-4516, Arrowhead Ventures LLC Triax Management Group to develop Area B of the Lansing Meadows Plan Development Area, or PDA, which includes 12 single-family senior housing units, tax parcel number 47.1-1-17.2, and 47.1-1-17.6. This project is directly adjacent to the standalone retail center BJ's Wholesale Club, Area A, and the proposed commercial section A1 of the PDA that is adjacent to the shops at the Kamaal, and is also adjacent to the enhanced wetlands, Area C of the PDA, adapted to provide a bird habitat and buffer between Areas A and B of the PDA. And B, the Area B development was previously permitted by special permit 4123 issued by the Village of Lansing Planning Board on April 9, 2018, subject to the conditions including that all work contemplated under the special permit be commenced on or before July 31, 2018, and all work shall be completed by July 31, 2020. C, the developer failed to timely meet the conditions of the special permit 4123, and upon request of the developer, special permit 4123 was amended on January 11, 2021, providing the developer until July 31, 2021, to complete the work contemplated by the special permit. D, special permit 4123 was again extended on July 27, 2021, when it became evident that the developer would again fail to timely meeting the conditions of the special permit 4123. E, on August 31, 2021, following another failure of the developer to meet the conditions of the special permit, planning board declined the developer's extension request, found the special permit 4123 was expired, and the developer's building permits were subsequently suspended. F, following three months of public hearings on the matter, special permit 2021-4516 was issued by the Village of Lansing Planning Board on December 13, 2021, which, like the prior special permit, divided the project into two phases, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Per condition V, development of commercial section A1 of the PDA could only begin upon the completion of Phase 2 under the special permit. G, pursuant to special permit 2021-4516, condition N, the deadline for completion of foundation work for Phase 2 buildings 8 and 14 is the scheduled planning board meeting of July 26, 2022. And condition P, the deadline for completion of Phase 2 buildings 8 and 14 is the scheduled planning board meeting of October 31, 2023. H, the developer failed to meet condition N on July 26, 2022. I, in August 2022, the developer requested an amendment to the special permit that condition N be removed. J, on September 12, 2022, the Village of Lansing Planning Board denied the developer's request for amendment and condition N was not extended. Further, the board recommended that the Village of Lansing Board of Trustees, established in escrow of the security of Phase 2, should work begin but be discontinued, and the site presented a threat to public safety. The escrow was approved and established on March 27, 2023. K, on July 25, 2023, the developer submitted a request for amendment to special permit 2021-4516, to extend the deadline for condition N to July 30, 2024, and the deadline for condition P to October 31, 2025. L, on November 28, 2023, the Village of Lansing Planning Board approved the request of extension, subject to the following additional conditions, which were incorporated into special permit 2021-4516. And those were, one, by December 15, 2023, A, the area known as Phase 2 will be cleaned up and graded for public safety. By cleaned up, we mean any material not used for a Phase 2 process needs to be removed from the site. Any material being used for Phase 2 needs to be out of sight and secured from possible public harm. This shall be subject to the approval of the code enforcement officer. B, a receipt will be provided showing the purchase of one "Do Not Enter" sign and one "One Way" sign. Signs shall be installed within two weeks of receipt of the signs by applicant. Placement of the signs shall be subject to the approval of the code enforcement officer. C, if conditions A and B above are timely met, the temporary CFCs for buildings 2, 20, 26, and 32 will be extended to May 1, 2024. The second condition, by May 1, 2024, the following items will be completed. A, all items needed for John Courtney, including but not limited to moving of sewer line, fixing manhole, and repairing the sidewalk. B, sewer and sidewalk easement shall be approved by council for village and applicant. C, finish Phase 1 tree planting. D, if conditions A, B, and C above are timely met, the temporary CFCs for buildings 2, 20, 26, and 32 will be extended to the first deadline date of proposed one-year extension of Phase 2, July 30, 2024. Failure to meet any of the above conditions or timelines will result in the default under the special permit, subject to the action under Village Code Section 145-59D9 and 145-59D11, and the temporary CFCs for buildings 2, 20, 26, and 32 will be suspended. And developer successfully completed the added conditions for December 15, 2023. And however, the developer failed to meet the conditions for May 1, 2024. O, pursuant to Village Code Section 145, or excuse me, 149D11, on May 28, 2024, June 10, 2024, and June 25, 2024, the Village of Lansing Planning Board held a public hearing on the revocation of special permit number 2021-4516. The public hearing was closed on June 25, 2024. P, at the public hearing, the Village of Lansing Planning Board considered information provided from the applicant, the Village Department of Public Works, or DPW, the Village Engineer, and the Village Code Enforcement and Zoning Officer. Q, regarding the condition 2A in question, the sewer line at the southern portion of the property was not constructed as drawn, causing the sewer line to lay too close to the proposed location of the Phase 2 buildings. The developer was advised by the Village DPW of this on August 29, 2023 via email, and requested that the developer relocate the sewer line to the correct location. R, at the May 6, 2024, meeting of the Village of Lansing Planning Board, after the May 1 deadline had passed, the developer, for the first time during the course of the special permit, asserted that the sewer line in question was a sewer lateral, not a sewer main, and therefore was not subject to the village's easement, and was not too close to the foundation, or in the alternative, it was a main, but requested that the village offset the easement to allow for only five feet to the north of the main and 15 feet to the south. S, the developer was permitted to submit support for this position for review by the DPW, the village's engineering consultant, and the Village of Lansing Planning Board. T, after thorough review of all the information provided by the developer, the DPW maintained its position that the sewer line was a main and not a lateral, and that it would continue to require the developer to move the line to the appropriate location, and it could not agree to offset the easement as requested by the developer. U, at the May 6, 2024, Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting, after the May 1 deadline had passed, the developer asserted again for the first time to the board that the damage to the sidewalk was caused by village salt trucks. V, following that meeting, the Village of Lansing Department of Public Works inspected the sidewalk with the developer and maintained that the issue was not solved, but instead was spalling due to concrete that was likely too wet upon pouring. W, at the May 28, 2024, Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting, the developer advised that he was recently enlisted a company to repair the sidewalk, and that it could not be done until August 2024, despite having six months' notice of the May 1 deadline. X, at the May 28, 2024, Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting, the board asked the developer about the progress to the Phase 2 building site. Y, the developer advised the board that he did not have any contractor lined up to do the work at the time, and that he did not intend to complete Phase 2, but instead alluded to a different developer with interest in the property. Z, as of July 30, 2024, no work has begun on the Phase 2 site, despite July 30 deadline for the foundations to be poured. In order to lay foundations, the developer would have to first move the sewer main at issue above to the satisfaction of the Village DPW. To, to the knowledge of the planning board, no efforts have been made on this part to the developer, of the developer, to move or accommodate the sewer main. AA, as to condition 2C, developer contends that the required plannings have been completed despite confirmation upon review by the planning board at the May 28, 2024 meeting, that the plannings are not of the variety approved and are not in the appropriate locations according to the approved planning plan. The developer did not seek approval from the planning board for these amendments to the plant, planting plan, nor have the plantings been redone to conform to the approved plan. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. One, Village of Lansing Planning Board hereby finds the developer has failed to meet the May 1, 2024, conditions set forth in special permit number 2021-4516, as amended on November 28, 2023. Two, the Village of Lansing Planning Board finds the developer failed to move the sewer main or otherwise accommodate the requests of the DPW related to the sewer main and the manhole which run along the southern portion of the property, despite ample notice and opportunity to remedy the developer's error. Three, the Village of Lansing Planning Board finds that the developer failed to repair the spalling proportions of the sidewalk and failed to timely pursue the scheduling of the work despite ample notice and opportunity to do so. Four, the Village of Lansing Planning Board finds that the developer failed to comply with the approved planting plan, improperly substituting alternative plans without the approval of the planning board, and placing the planting in the wrong location. Five, the Village of Lansing Planning Board finds that no construction work has been commenced on Phase 2 or Area A1, nor believes that it would be reasonably feasible for the developer to complete the work required within the timeframe required, given the continued delays and failures of the developer, and the developer's indication that he has no present intent on completing Phase 2 himself. And six, due to the continued failures and foreseen failures by the developer to timely complete Phase 1 of the project and commence Phase 2 of the project, it is hereby determined by the Village of Lansing Planning Board that special permit number 2021-4516 is revoked as to Phase 2 and Area A1. I will entertain a motion to revoke the special permit as per the resolution that I just read.
I'd be honored to make that.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Pat. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay, so Eric, I will be in touch with your.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Eric, I will be in touch with your attorney tomorrow as to a path forward for your Phase 1, since that permit has not been revoked, and how we can get you to permanent COCs for those buildings, which I think we can accomplish in a timely fashion, so I think we can get through Phase 1 pretty quickly with you.
Anything else, Natalie?
Nope.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for special permit number 2024-4776. Nabarala? Okay, got it. Consulting professional are proposing to remove the former Pizza Hut building located at 2301 North Trip Hammer Road, tax parcel number 46.1-5-4.3, and construct a 2,400 square foot drive-through style restaurant. As per Village Code Section 145-43D1R, the special permit is required for a high-traffic food and beverage establishment. Do I have to vote to open up the public hearing?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to open up the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing for special permit number 2024-4776.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jim.
So I know Mike can try to put stuff on the, on the screen, but I will put this on the board as well.
Before, before you get going, Matt, let me come out there and go through a couple items first, okay?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Mike.
Sorry to interrupt. Just a couple items. You got a packet. Matt and John hand it over to you. You should get a full set of plans with the application and.
What happened? Oh, you took my packet. There you go. Very quick. It's okay, I have others I can look at.
Oh, do you need stuff?
No, it's good.
Can you take your packet today?
I know, I love to hear you took it to your office and all. That's okay.
I'll bring it back to you in a second. First, first and foremost, I do have the, I do have the mailings for the public hearing. I do have those mailings. And what you guys have in front of you, since the last time that Matt and John and Mike were here to give you an informal review of the project, they have since been to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There were three attempted variances. One was a front yard variance for, I believe, you'll, you'll see on here, that was 2401. Instead of being a 75-foot front yard setback, they're asking for 58.1-foot setback. That was approved. That is beneficial, because the building would be moved more towards North Trip Hammer Room, which takes the actual building out of the sewer easement. It becomes an issue. At right at the moment, the existing building, Pizza Hut, is sitting in that easement. If you ever had to get into there, then you would have to tear up the building and it would just be. So this accomplishes both for them and for the village also. The second and third appeal was for signage. It's been determined that that parcel is in the Kukumaw Plan Sign Area, so there are different rules for that than there is for what you'll find in our code book for commercial use. What was approved, as you'll see on 2402, let's go to 2403 first. That would be five building-mounted signs of a total of 127 square feet. This was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you also have in your package, you have viewings of what those signs look like on the buildings. That was pretty straightforward, and the Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed that quite a bit. The last variance was for the pylon sign. Now, that does involve the planning board, because as per your planned sign area, anything over 52 feet, I believe, has to be approved by the planning board, as well as they also have to have the variance to have more than what is required, or more than what is allowed for that planned sign areas. So at this point, all three variances have been approved, but you will need to review what the pylon sign looks like, and the planning board will have to approve that also. Matt has provided a rendering for that, and which I will put up on the screen here in a few minutes. In the meantime, since that last meeting, you also have in front of you, I did get the GML 239 back from the county. As we had anticipated, the two recommendations on there are pretty standard. I believe it was the same recommendations for the new building that McGuire Nissan put up. A lot of it has to do with the energy code.
I was gonna say, yep.
Has a lot to do with LED lighting, and it also says that they need to pick at least four of the energy elements for the new construction project outlined. And you'll see the attachment of what the choices are for that. This has been given to Matt and, and John, so they can take a look at this.
Yeah.
I absolutely understand what you said. I did. I just went and grabbed the deal stack.
I was getting some track. I know.
I don't care about my feelings anymore.
But you're right. We were being rude.
I listened to everything.
You're absolutely right. I was just saying, did we add those, that whole business about having to choose?
I talked to Michael about it. We added it to our, like, general special, our general special permit report. I think we said two out of four, but, but, yeah.
That's why, I'm sorry.
Right, same concept.
Did we have that?
Yeah, I mean, well, that'll all be discussed afterwards. The conditions of the resolution.
Okay.
So, again, some of, some of the math aren't exactly burdensome at all, so.
I was gonna say, I mean, I could probably do some of them.
So I'm gonna bring up what you need, Matt. I just dulled the knife for you, so good luck. I wanted to see, Mike, you took half my thunder, so we'll make the presentation that much quicker. Again, I'm Matt Nabarel, Nabarel Consulting. We are the right-to-build land development engineering firm for hospitality, restaurant group. My design engineer, John Basset, who has been the lion's share of this work, and I'm just the mouthpiece, but John will be interjecting as well. Our client, Mike McCracken, who you met last time, Mike had a conflict tonight, so unavailable, so he's putting the reins in our, hopefully, capable hands. So Mike talked about where we've been since we were with you guys about a month and a half ago or so with that concept preliminary submittal, and we've been to the zoning board of appeals, as I went into all that, because Mike talked about it. This set of plans is what we believe satisfies the town's checklist, and as well, our due diligence as far as site design elements. So this full package includes what we call a layout plan, a grading plan that looks at the elevations and the contours, a utility plan to show the service connections for our water sewer. It includes a landscaping plan that, and we'll touch upon that, because I know that is a critical element. We've populated on that landscaping plan, the plumbing system that the facility wants to look at as far as the tree rules and tree plantings and keeping tree places today. So we populated that. There is a lighting plan, and per the county review letter, does include LED dark sky compliant light fixtures, downcast light fixtures. So this, this set of plans, we believe satisfies the criteria that you would like for the complete site plan. Just to quickly again go over this particular layout at the former Pizza Hut location, as Mike said, we're taking this approximately 2,200 square foot drive-through restaurant facility. The Pizza Hut kind of sits further in here, and it sits in a hole, and as Mike said, these dashed lines represent that Santa Cruz sewer easement. We try to be respectful of those, those easements and such. And as well, we requested that variance to be selfishly push our building a little bit more visually located in that depression area coming off of the intersection of the off-ramp of 13 and Trip Hammer. And if you visit at that site, and we had those elevations, and you talked about, when you're, when you're sitting here at the off-ramp, mine is 18 feet, 18 feet lower than someone sitting here at the signal light at the ramp. And off of Trip Hammer, when you're heading northbound on Trip Hammer, it was like 12 or 13 feet, right?
Yeah.
So we're, we're quite a bit lower. So part of the reasoning for both the physical location of the building and some of those sign variances were visual impacts. And what we all want to have is, when there's an investment made, that this becomes a successful endeavor. Both, I think, the village would feel the same way, and certainly, the owner developer feels that same way, and hence, that, that sign location, and I'll, I'll show you that rendered graphic of what that sign will look like physically as you're coming from Trip Hammer Road. So that kind of gives you the broad brush. With this particular parking layout, there's a full-site criteria table that kind of deals with some of those setback issues. It deals with the particulars of the site. It's about 1.3 acres. The building size, 2,240 square feet. We have 28 parking spaces as well as that drive-through service. And what's important to us is, and I'm sure the board as well, is that we have proper stacking and queue length for that drive-through service. And if Mike was here, he would tell you that post-COVID, the stores, this is, I think, in the 40s, that his group has franchised with Taco Bell. So he's, this isn't his first rodeo with this particular building. They're seeing close to 85% of their food service through the drive-through, and it might even be approaching 90, depending on which store and which location. So it's very important that that becomes an efficient system, and I think he did tell you guys last time that Taco Bell is one of the fastest drive-throughs as far as from order board to pickup. So they, they get the, the customer moving right along, so there is not a long and excessive queue lengths. When we talk about the stacking, and what we have up to just this point in this site, we have about eight cars, and certainly there's ability with the excessive width of our lane for well over 15 cars stacked before they're, before they're even getting beyond the, the main area. And if we talk about how it impacts the plaza, we've got over 20 cars that have the capability of stacking. Mike will tell you, at the busiest lunch hour at his busiest store, his stack is no more than eight cars. So we feel we're more than ample with regards to, and when you look at drive-throughs, you got it, it's almost backwards. It's counterclockwise circulation, because we have to serve the driver. So that counterclockwise circulation becomes that pattern that we, when we're doing a layout, that we want to apply. So with that, we are asking for two curb cuts off of the plaza. Okay, so we've got this westerly curb cut, which would attract the, the customer coming off of the signal and entering the plaza, but as well, the activities within the plaza. We've got the, I'm sorry, my brain's a little fried. I've been working hard all day long since 7:00 in the morning and traveling, but the, the workout place, it's in the plaza.
Planet Fitness.
Planet Fitness, yeah. Sorry. From Planet Fitness and from the, the, I don't know, is that senior housing next to us, or?
The hotel.
There's a hotel there.
The hotel, but is it active hotel right now?
Well.
I know. Whatever, but they're sitting right up here. So, so the potential for them to either, you know, as a pedestrian or to come in, we want to make sure we have that, that quick access for them on the east side of the site as well. And again, even with that, we want to make sure we have that efficient parking, and Taco Bell nationwide is saying, for this store, which they call it the Endeavor Model, they want to have between 25 to 30 parking spaces. So we're meeting the, the criteria of the, of the mothership, I'll call it. So I wanted to kind of get to some of these other sheets before we turn it over to you guys, but let's, let's go right to that landscaping plan, which is C8, C8, sorry.
C8, right.
C8 is landscaping.
Aren't they, I know they're, I know they're four, three of them are.
In the right-hand table, the center table itself uses the, the tree unit calculation that's included in the wire. So we have the, the tree density at 33 units per acre. We have 1.3 acres. Doing the math, the required unit is 41 units. What's being proposed is we are, we're satisfying that with 41.5 units. So that, that satisfies the equation. We are, we had our survey team deal with the dimensional of the existing trees as far as DBHs, and so that table is the top table as far as what's out here today, and then what is populated, and then the below legend, the landscape legend, it shows our proposal. And then the below legend, the landscape legend, it shows our proposed plantings, which includes both tree and shrub species. And so we're populating that. But for the most part, we're maintaining that existing conifer trees that exist off of the 13 ramp. Really, the only thing that is sitting off of trip hammer is wild brush. So there's nothing of substantial size or frankly, the, the goal here is to clean that up and make that, you know, make that more presentable. And as well, that will also enhance the visual aspect of this new facility here on the corner. And then some spread out of different types of shrubs and tree plantings throughout. John, which ones are we losing? Because the demo plan shows it, but there's a couple that are sitting here.
Yeah, there's a couple where that western driveway is going.
And here.
Yep.
So we are losing a couple just to functionally put it, but we're doing everything we can to save as many of the trees that exist on that site today, which kind of falls into what Pizza Hut had as landscaping and such. So, and again, we're here to entertain those discussions of, and certainly want to be sensitive to proper plantings and proper satisfying those, those type of conditions at the same time, balancing that with the visual aspects that, to make this again, a sustainable and long-lasting facility here in the village. The, the site plan, we want to talk about that sign issue, right? And we did, and this is something that was not in the package because our, Mike didn't want me to do it. He hired his architectural team and I'm like, Mike, I could have done that. What this is, is a physical rendering of what that sign looks like as you're heading, again, up trip hammer. This is the signal. This is the 13 off-ramp here. And so we're, we're sitting to the, was that to the northwest of the site? And so we're actually in the wrong lane, but the...
I was gonna say, I'm very, we're... I think we're about to have an accident here.
Yes. But this is true scale and height, okay? So taking the, the scale and dimensional pieces to get an idea of what that proposed pylon sign will look like along the, the trip hammer approach and compare that. And again, this shows they did not render in the new store. That's the old Pizza Hut. So the store will be a little bit closer than, but we, the whole aspect of what does EBA asked us to do, DCE, sorry, you guys are different than...
Different.
It doesn't, I get it.
We can.
But they wanted us to see how that sign translates to the neighborhood. And it is visual, but it's not ostentatious in my humble opinion.
So is, so we're looking south?
You can see that, just so you know. Those of us on Zoom, we can't see what it is.
Yeah, there's, there's not an image, there's not...
Mike's getting it.
Mike's got it on a flash right now. He's actually gonna go share it.
One second, Mike will put it. It's like the last slide on your...
So is this going south? I'm driving, I'm looking south.
You're, you're looking towards like trip hammer plaza, yeah.
Okay.
So like Big Lots and everything's on your left, yeah.
That shot is like sitting here.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
So the visual is sitting to the north, looking south, southeast.
And it was kind of in the corners, I saw, I think.
Yeah, it's on, it's on your, um...
Yeah, on one of these little, like around here.
This is the sign location?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's the sign right here.
Yeah, that, I know it was on one of these, yeah, okay. I wanted to drive over there to see. The thing that I'm, well, let me get to the discussion. I know, I'll go pause you out of it.
Michael break the screen.
I of course think all the signs are ugly, but that's, these are these lollipop signs that McDonald's has, and I just think they're silly.
Can you see that okay? No, I think you're sharing the wrong screen maybe?
Like a lollipop.
We see your desktop.
You have messy desktop. Mine looks way worse. Oh, I remember all the time.
Mike's super organized. Big shocker, right?
I leave everything on my desk.
Now we can see it back, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to zoom in just a little bit, Mike?
Can you? Oh, there it is. I couldn't even see it from here. I see. Okay.
There you go, perfect, Mike.
Here's my question though. Oh, I see, no, 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 okay.
So that's angled so you can see it as you're getting off, off-ramp and as you're coming like on...
Yeah, so it'll be two-sided. So you'll see it coming off the off-ramp, you know, as you're...
On trip hammer.
Right, and then as you're, the whole goal is, we want that sign visible before they get to the entrance to the shopping plaza.
How I see it.
So if, if, when you're here, it's too late, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
From that angle that they're showing you is, can I see it before I take the left into the plaza? And then as you're coming off the ramp or something, you can see...
The ramp, you can see the building though, quite clearly right now. When I, because I mean, when you're coming up, anybody who's looking for food is going to say food near me and Google it. You can really see below all these conifers, because they've been, you know, they've lost the lower branches. I think the building is very visible from there. So the intent of this is to capture people after they've turned onto trip hammer.
Right, so, so certainly when you're, because of that location, again, the intent is sitting at the signal off the off-ramp.
Yeah.
Boom, they can, they'll see it right there. And even as they're approaching the off-ramp, they'll be able, the way that, that sign will be angled, as they're, as they're coming up the off-ramp, then they can, before they see the building that's sitting in the hole, they'll see the sign, oh, Taco Bell's right here. And then they can bang the right and then get into the plaza.
Well, if they're just looking for food, they'll also see some other signs, which will help to lead them to you as well.
I'll play devil's advocate though, and, and not for this particular project, but for anybody else, like that building also does have a gigantic red roof on it. But if you, if you didn't live here in the village, you would see a building with a red roof, you don't know what it is. Well, right now, there's, but again, there's no Pizza Hut signage there right now, so I, I, I would imagine, I don't want to say promise or guarantee, I would imagine if somebody was coming up that ramp, they would look down and see a red building, not know what it is.
But this one has, but this will have signs.
Well, it'll have some signs on it, but I don't, when we haven't talked about that, I don't know how big those are. But again, if you're traveling at some speed, can you see them yes or no? I don't know, I'm sure there's information on that.
This is actually strategically placed better than where I had suspected, because if you were on the, if you were on this house sign, if you're in a car, you're gonna be blocked by those trees. And you can see from 13 and you can see from North Caribbean.
Yeah, no, this one is...
This seems like the most logical place.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah. What I wanted to kind of show is this prototype that I'm talking about, this endeavor, it is a hardscape materials, face blocking with some hardy wood, but it doesn't have that, the logo, the purple is in what they call the tower elements, but it's not, it's, it's nicely done.
Yes, it is.
It's a sharp-looking building, it really is. Their, the purple color in their logo and in their branding is, is just, I think, wrapping around that big bell. But when you look at the building as a whole, it isn't like that red roof of the Pizza Hut or some of the, the blue roofs of the old Pancake House and stuff, so. The new prototype is a nicely, nice-looking building when you see the new ones.
Is that sign lit?
Yes.
The Taco Bell is lit?
The, it'll be backlit sign, and then an hour after closing, the light will turn off.
What time's closing anticipated to be? Because I know the one downtown is like two in the morning or something.
I believe, and I, I would have to let Mike answer that, but I believe it was a lot of time, but I, I can't, don't hold me on that. I need Mike to answer that question.
Okay, one of the things that I could...
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Yumila, you had a question before we, before we had the picture up.
Oh, she just...
Here's the...
She muted herself.
Yeah, we'd be talking about what it looks like when you're coming off the ramp. And I think for us people to make a decision about, you know, how this looks and how it works, it'd be really great to have a rendering of the building in its new place with this sign in its new place from that very position that, that you're saying is a really important key position for catching customers. So I think it's really hard for us to kind of make a judgment call on that when we don't have a visual of it. So I'd love to be able to see what that, that...
Yeah, yeah, I think to Yumila's point, you know, and, and I would say not just what it looks like from there with that, with what the Taco Bell building will look like down there, but also a rendering of it, what the sign will look like, very similar to this, coming up the ramp and also on trip hammer coming the other direction.
We'll talk about, and I know that I need to just chat with Mike if he's already populated a, a 3D sketchup of this one. And we've done that on others, so we'll put that down, or ask Mike if that's been done for this site.
Okay.
And that will give us any view you want, really. If we, once we get it put in SketchUp, it's all 3D.
Yep.
That's fantastic, if you can fly around, then we'd love that. And then my other question is, why is the sign lit after the shop is closed?
Say again?
What was that, Yumila? Sorry, I hit a button.
After it's, after the store's closed.
Well, advertising's advertising and, you know, as people are moving about it, we don't want to be, you know, well past hours, but, you know, it's, it's good to kind of just as a branding item to be able to say, this is where I'm located. And, you know, so that's, that's part of the reason in...
I think, I think we have, we have, our code says we have to turn it an hour after closing.
And that's what we're...
And is it off or is it down? I know that we had this discussion with Nissan too.
Some of the safety ones for the building themselves go down to 50% at least, or whatever, or less for safety. But, but I think the other, you really, this has to go off an hour after.
Yeah, it's either 10 o'clock or an hour after closing is what our code says.
That's the code.
Okay, so it's in the code?
Yeah, it's in the code, Yumila, for that particular thing.
The code says it must stay on an hour after or can't stay on up to an hour?
Up to an hour after.
I don't know, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about those experiences I've had where I've pulled off the habit, I'm like, oh, look, there's a place I can get food and I turn it and it's closed because of this very violent sign. And also like, you know, having a lit sign when nothing is open. I mean, I understand the advertising bit of it and you might, you know, catch somebody's eye who might remember you next time, but at the same time, you know, any, any unnecessary lighting...
I agree with that, of course.
I think you really can redefine what necessary is.
Hey, Yumila, can you flip the microphone down on your headset so it's, there you go?
Yeah, there, thank you, sorry. Yeah, I was just saying that...
We can hear you.
Okay, great.
My old ears...
Just moving forward, yeah, there you go. Now we can hear you better, okay?
And to touch base on what Yumila said, as far as necessary lighting, we went through this with Nissan and we altered our, our code to, I don't know word for word at this point, but it has to do with when I review the, the lighting plan, which lights would be deemed necessary, like over exits, that type of deal, they need to be reduced 50%. But I'll go over that with Matt and John and Mike.
It's in the code pretty much, yeah.
Other questions right now? Or I know, I do have, I assume you have a lot.
I have a bunch of questions, but let's have Brent have a chance first.
Go for it.
Okay, so, um, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Brent, because I'm gonna, I have my little list here, I'm gonna just go give them order.
Lisa?
I just, first of all, I came to these and this says front. Is this the west face? I was, I was getting confused as to what is the front of the B of building and what is the, because this looks like a skinny part. So I think this is the west.
That'll be the west.
That's the side facing trip hammer.
West facing.
Yes.
So that's the one that faces trip hammer. Then we have the portal elevation.
That'll be the south.
Okay, I thought so, that's that, what I'm considering the back, that's the one facing the off-ramp.
Yep.
Okay. And this, but to me, okay, so when people, if people choose to get out of their car and come in, where do they go? Into the south?
That would be the...
Because the parking is, right?
The main entry is the south side.
That's what I thought, okay. And then this is obviously because of the length, this must be the north.
And that's the drive-through window piece.
Oh, this, the north? Why are these stapled at the corner?
That's just yours.
Hey, Lisa, what I, what I have up on there now is what faces 13, that's south.
Yeah, that's the south. But then the one that is parallel to that would be the north.
That's, that's the side facing, like Joe and Faber. That's where the drive-through windows are.
And the drive-through is on that. Okay, that's what I, I figured that, but I thought, all right, just want to be sure. And this is east. I'm a north-southeast person. Okay. So now in terms of the parking, one of the things that I think was presented to us that you were going to have some outdoor seating, is that, I didn't notice that one way or the other on the plans, has that been thrown overboard or?
We've got plenty of room. We've got, we got this, I, let's just, we'll talk about what we, what we can do for some...
You know, because so much of, of your business, I guess, is drive-through, I guess it's, the intention is that people wouldn't stop.
Well, and again, it's not, it's not a bad idea to put a couple permanent outdoor seats, you know, we certainly, we, we, these are the approaches, but we have, we have a yard here that we could populate that with, without a problem.
Well, to that end, the thing is, if, I was gonna say, if you do that, I would put some trees there, because I'll tell you, I was driving by, went to Home Depot, and what's, what's out there? The old Tim something. And it was like, I think it's out there. And here are these outdoor things, and there isn't a green anything anywhere. And I thought, anybody in this weather is not going to go anywhere where there's no shade. So I'm just saying, if you do do outdoor, get some tree, make it pretty, because people really do...
We got, we got a sugar maple sitting here, we can add one, we can add something next to it and have a nice, nice big maples in that area.
But do we, do, so one of the things we talked about is whether you, you have some standards for parking, but I don't know what, how, Mike, maybe, is this, this is, we didn't think we maybe needed this much parking.
Well, by code 145-54, it's, it's almost that.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
So, you know, which is, which is smart way and a lot of towns are doing this now is to allow the tenant spaces to kind of determine that with some guidance.
Right.
Probably, we have ample room here, and so that's why when we say we're providing the 28 spaces, that's kind of right in the mean between 25 and 30, so.
We even need that, is what I'm wondering, because of the impervious surface, and I don't know whether it's even needed.
Right.
But...
Well, again, Taco Bell franchise is telling us between 25 and 30.
Okay.
So that's based on nationwide stats.
Stats, yeah.
And is it over the course of time? But again, they don't want to put any more in than they have to, why? But we, I'll, I'll address it with Mike and his, and his people.
And our Mike too, I just, yeah.
We say Mike, Mike McCracken, who's, who we're working with here. But that has been vetted through, again, his group has over 40 stores under their, under their lease arrangements, so.
Can't imagine that you'd need 28.
Right, and I'd love to know what their parking counts are and like how, how full, like at the fullest time is, is every one of their parking spots taken up? Because, you know, we know what they've done and if we have their data, we can right-size this.
We started like getting an answer to that and we'll, we'll get some of that data.
Well, I guess, I'm just saying, well, if you have your standards, I guess they have to be met by your...
Well, there's a balance there.
Yeah.
So essentially, this plan, before we can even sneeze, before we came to you, it goes to what's called a committee.
Right.
And that committee is incorporated and they say, we support this project. And so part of that, that isn't just even Mike McCracken and his...
No, I understand.
...hotel restaurant, it'll have to go back before committee to say, yeah, we can lose two spaces and is that, you know, whatever. Or is it, if you're saying you want to lose 16 spaces, I can tell you that won't happen.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that, but I am saying that, you know, there is this trend to fewer, people are not just, you know, encouraging driving and this is kind of, some people are going to probably be parked somewhere else, but...
How many spaces do you think McDonald's has over there? And the reason I'm asking is I see...
They never use their spaces.
Well, let me tell you, that's not true. That's why I wanted to say, I see that breakfast is on this space. Taco Bell serves breakfast.
Oh, I see.
So I have been through, I have been in the drive-through at McDonald's.
The drive-through's another.
No, no, I'm not, but I've been in the drive-through and in the morning and all the parking spaces are full. And one day I was like, are there, and I think it's a lot of the scene, so there's a lot of senior people up on this hill and they probably go in and get their coffee and have their breakfast. So I was surprised one day. I'm like, why are all the spots full?
Well, and I think as we get any further away from 2020, we're getting back to more socialization where, between 2020 and even last year, people were still a little leery of sitting in a public place like this. And I think it's kind of coming back a little bit, certainly not all the way, but there's, I think you gotta be, you know, smart of trending and, and what happens.
Right.
That's where we have to rely on some of that statistics that the, the nationwide people are telling us.
Okay.
You have 28 spaces.
28 spaces. That should be, that should be plenty.
Um, there, there seems to be about 48 at McDonald's.
I was gonna say, what's like 25, 45 and 48? Yeah.
And that line, um, like the lineup spots at, at the McDonald's, we're looking at like a different aerial view that runs along the drive-through is rarely full.
Rarely used.
But the one that runs along the entrance side is almost always.
The ones that you would park in if you were going to go inside are consistently.
Which is what they have. Their spots are right where somebody would go.
I have some backside full at breakfast and lunchtime. Yeah.
Or anytime a contractor shows up with a trailer and can't fit into. Honestly, you have a trailer and you're going to take your crew there. You need like four or five.
Hard to cross your Joanne's and go down.
Well, yeah, maybe.
Right.
Oh, yeah, Mike.
28 spaces there.
Okay.
Required to have two per hundred square feet. So that's 44 spaces needed, but you have that 25% reduction.
Yeah.
Which you usually, in most cases.
We want to encourage, I think.
And also, as Matt had said, you're talking about a lot of their, a lot of their, uh, people come there for the drive-through.
Eighty percent or so.
And then do employees use this parking as well?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have them using that shift change you got done.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I just.
You also have to remember that you've got, Ramallah has plenty of spaces over there. Nobody monitors where that goes.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, there's always, I should, I suppose that even employees could park there if necessary.
So required.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask.
No, it's good. The rest of the space would not be recommended.
Oh, I don't think we're saying more.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Oh, no, I'm not saying more. I'm just saying, the whole deal you have to have is about any more than you.
Yeah. And looking at it, I'm not like thrown off like, oh my gosh, that's way too many. I don't, yeah, but to Lisa's point, right? If there's an opportunity and it makes sense to remove one or two.
Go for it.
Let's, you know, let's think about that. But if not.
In an environmental sense, certainly this is, you know, part of our job, but less asphalt is.
That's what I mean.
Less runoff, less heat aspects.
That was my thought. There's more.
There's a lot of issues with regards to that. But I think.
Okay, thank you.
To Mike's point, uh, you know, we are, if this was 2018, we would be putting 40 spaces on.
Yeah, great. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Well, thank, thank you for saying that thing about less asphalt because you've actually just given me a perfect segue to the question that I was going to ask before about the site plan. So do you need two, um, two, two curb cuts, two entrance and entrances that are, are, um, are two-way? Or can everybody who's parking enter from the one side and then only have the drive-through exit from the other side? And here, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what I'm looking at. If I could, if I could share my screen, I can show you the part that I was questioning because I put a little note on my, on my screen.
Go for it, Yumila. I just gave you access.
Okay. Um, I just.
No, I was thinking about two curb cuts. I think it's fine.
Yeah. Um, so two curb cuts, I mean, it makes sense, but, um, what I was wondering is this, so if you have cars entering here and then exiting out past the driveway, you end up with a conflict where people coming out of the driveway and people leaving, um, from where they've parked, have a little bit of a conflict. You could very easily, um, have the right side entrance be both directions and have people come in and either park or go through the driveway and then have the drive-through have their own dedicated entrance exit to the, you know, to out the parking area. And you would reduce the amount of asphalt that you have. You reduce the opportunity for a conflict between someone leaving the parking area and someone coming out of the driveway. And then you regain all this space that is kind of squiggled and green as additional green space and you reduce your asphalt. If you reduce that and then you reduce, you know, three parking spaces, you hit your 25 minimum, you end up with a lot more green space than you would have had otherwise, less asphalt and frankly, a better, um, less, less opportunity for people to have a conflict with, uh, cars coming out at the same time from two different places.
So the issue with that markup is you are really, uh, pinching the queuing and stacking, uh, at the order board. And you are, if, if everyone has to enter at the, uh, east entry, we're not getting that, uh, counter-clockwise around the entire building like I, I was explaining before. So that is, that is, you know, during those peak lunch hours, we really need to have 10 cars and we need to queue up 10 cars, which will start to get to, uh, in front of the parking spaces. And that's why that lane width is a little bit wider than a, than a standard lane width of 24, where we've got over 30 feet there because of that reason. So that, we want to have that counterclockwise circulation around the building so that we have the proper queue length and stacking for our drive-through use. So, uh, I, I get your point and we can certainly look at it. We'll, we'll mark this up and vet it, uh, with, uh, with the ownership group, uh, and see if there's anything we can do. But, uh, the, the circulation and the two-way access, um, becomes, uh, a calling card for these, um, the acronym in the industry is QSRs, quick, quick serve restaurants. And so we want to be able to, uh, meet those needs of, uh, convenience and proper circulation. The conflict point that you're talking about, about the egress and, and, uh, cars that are, uh, at that point where your, where your hand is, really is, it, it isn't as, uh, it should not be a conflict because anyone who's leaving the restaurant is going to be taking a right turn. And anyone who is entering is going to continue straight. So there's no real, there's no real conflict for that particular movement. But everyone who's leaving the drive-through will be taking a right turn and, and exiting the plaza, uh, at that point and just shoot right up that aisle. But the, but the entry, uh, at West Point is, again, um, convenient for the people coming off of Trip Hammer, coming into the plaza and getting into the, uh, the restaurant area without having to circumvent and manipulate and move around the ring road of the, uh, the shopping plaza.
Okay. So then I have a question. If you, so you're, if I understand this correctly, you expect that when you have, you know, a full capacity of people waiting for the drive-through, um, they'll be stacked ins, inside this drive.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, the, the peak, the peak of the stack is there. And I know the next question is like, well, what, what about blocking those parking spaces? Well, that, that happens in a normal drive-through scenario. Most drive-throughs at the, at the end of their stack and it becomes, we need to have our customers to be courteous of other customers. And, and if you, you know, I imagine if, if you go down the main strip in Ithaca, there's several drive-throughs in which the, the drive-through lane conflicts with some parking spaces and they work. But again, in this case, we have about seven cars, uh, from the pickup window to that, uh, entry point of that drive-through ring, but we would like to have three or four more cars to be able to stack. And they can either stack coming off of the east driveway or coming off of the west driveway. But we have the ability for those, that, those extra cars. And that's again, part of the criteria that Taco Bell wants to see 10 cars, uh, in internally within that circulation pattern, uh, approaching the, the drive-through area.
But that's the one that you said, Mike said, pretty much even his busiest ones have eight usually.
I understand, but criteria.
I did repeat.
No, 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 no. You're a hundred percent right.
Okay.
But so.
Right, okay.
Pragmatically versus what criteria is that goes through committee is two different things.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Um, yeah. I mean, if you guys ended up reducing down to your 25 that, uh, your committee has asked is the minimum, you could have those cars stacked over here without having that conflict, certainly. If you took back some of the space instead of asphalt, again, have this two-way circulation and one way out, you could move every, the whole footprint over, a little bit more and then have this just be a longer, uh, space that you could stack people without conflict. I'm just thinking about, um, anytime that we have an opportunity to, to reduce the amount of asphalt on a space, we want to make sure that we can do that. Um, and then, um, so I guess I take that under advisement and whatever it is that you guys can bring back, um, with data for us about that, that'd be great. Um, and then, let's see, so that was that.
Hey, Yumila, Mike has one question. He came out.
Say, my, my first reaction to that, if you're losing construction off and you have all your line coming in through here, it's fire department access.
Oh, that's what Natalie was just, Natalie just said, they can't maneuver that. No, you, no.
Yeah.
You're gonna gain some grid space, but at what risk? I mean, that's. Our, our fire chief's gonna want 360 circulation.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, that's, uh, that's what it is.
Delivery trucks too.
Right. And I was gonna ask that. So is there an area where the delivery trucks, um?
They, they, they go right through the front door.
Oh, they go through? Okay.
Okay.
They, they schedule that and you'll see, and they are big trucks because they're servicing, you know, all of, all of the franchisees in the area, including, you know, down Main Street in Ithaca. But they come with big trucks off hours and they, they will offload. And again, here in the commercial district, it won't be bothering anybody. So.
Okay. And, you know, I'm gonna sound like I'm contradicting myself because I said, you know, less hard space a minute ago, but the other question I have for you is somebody who's like come from Planet Fitness or somebody who comes off the bus, how do they walk to your Taco Bell?
Through the parking lot.
Well, right now there's no sidewalks on that south end of the plaza anyway. So they would come through that, that driveway. I mean, uh, we can talk about adding, uh, adding a sidewalk too that extends, um, from the southeast end and bring it over to, uh, further east and to the north. I mean, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, uh, again, adding hardscape, but, um, certainly, uh, if we want to have a dedicated pedestrian access, that's how we would do it.
Um, I think, um, you know, on our, our comp plan asks for every property to have sidewalk access. Uh, and so I think, um, it'd be really worthwhile to see. I mean, we're supposed to, we can give exceptions to that as a planning board, but those are so beast, you know, really special case exceptions where we say, no, you don't need a sidewalk here.
Yeah, I would be right because so, right, you can, you can, if you say you're in a wheelchair, right? If you're at Planet Fitness, sure, you can come across the parking lot, you can come, you can get to this property. You can come down the driveway there. It's not that you can't get there, but for people walking or just, you know, for, if there is an ADA item, it's pretty unsafe for somebody to have to go through that, that two-way drive area to get to the store. So.
I mean, if you're walking with a little kid, you wouldn't want to do that.
Sidewalks to where.
In this case, right, it would be a sidewalk to the parking lot.
Also come along that the continued argument of a sidewalk to nowhere just leads to no sidewalks to anywhere. So if you just say, well, this parcel doesn't need one because it's not going to go anywhere, that argument extrapolates itself to where you just don't.
Yeah, I don't think we're against it. We're just, yeah. So we can, we can certainly, uh, provide that to that, that, uh, east, uh, northeast location.
Yeah, I, I, I'm curious what it would look like, right? You, I don't know if that's, what is that crush? Or is that's pavement right in front of like the main entrance there? Kind of, I'm just gonna say the, the south of the picture there. Like just in, in between the building and that first row parking spot, you have, there's a sidewalk there?
Yes.
Just seeing what, what, just out of curiosity, you know, out of curiosity, right? Extending, extending that, you know.
Yeah, that's what comes up.
Oh, yeah.
Stretching that east and running north to the plaza driveway. And then that's easy enough to do.
I think that would be great. Yeah. Because hopefully at some point, the, the problem is, is, you know, this is your property, but it fucks this parking lot that I have a fit about every time I'm there. Because it's so unsafe and unfriendly and, and it's just, but let's start the process.
Working towards, yeah.
To Natalie's point, if you did that, it would be wonderful because then
Sure.
at some point, as time goes by, we can say, okay, well, get up, come join Taco Bell so that we can get people moving.
Do you still have a plan? I know you originally came, you talked about this whole property and possibly putting another building for another business on this property. Do you remember?
My knowledge that is off the table.
Oh, okay.
I don't think there's room at this point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't look beautiful in this one.
It looks like it. As I originally talked about that, the first time.
We had some early on concepts and I don't think they've gone anywhere. And then we, we were talking to you guys fairly early on, but, uh, for the last three months, we haven't, uh, seen anything from the ownership group. And I think pretty much what the last time Mike McCracken and I were talking about this is, this is the program for this site.
Okay. Um, Yumila, did you have any thoughts on the landscape plan since you are, are?
Yes, that was my last question, um, that I had. So, um, uh, who, who do you have preparing your, your landscape plan? Is it somebody local, regional, or someone out of state?
Right now it was, uh, the, the franchisee and the Taco Bell has in their prototypes, they have species that they desire to, uh, on the site. And, uh, frankly, as site engineers, we populated this landscape plan.
Okay. Um, there's a couple of issues that if you found somebody who was local, who knew their plants might help you avoid some future problems. Maples, like the sugar maple that you have listed there, um, really do not like salt.
Yep.
So, um, if they're in a place where they're vulnerable to, to being salted, when we have our snows in the winter, you're going to end up having to replace that tree over and over again, or it's just going to not thrive. You have a couple of different Viburnums on your list and, uh, we have a local Viburnum leaf beetle, that decimates Viburnums of certain types. So if you reach out to either the Cornell, they keep a Viburnum list of what's appropriate for the area, but also, um, any of our, our local landscapers. Um, and when I mean local, I mean like in the county, um, our county-based landscapers know which ones are okay to plant in our area and which are not. There's no point in you spending money to plant something that just gets eaten by a beetle. Um, and then the last one is you've got, well, two things, you've got a Miscanthus on there. So it's an ornamental grass and that's on a do not plant list for the state of New York. So we can't plant those.
But there are the grassroots that are allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just not.
No, the Miscanthus is not allowed.
Yep.
In New York.
Okay.
We'll clean that up.
Yep. And then the last one is you have a, a blue morning glory. That's an annual vine, which is, you know, lovely, but what's going to happen to that next year? Um, so, uh, I just want to make sure that, that you've got somebody, um, somebody with a, a, a eye to this region for the safety of your plants, but also the appropriateness and maybe a longer term plan than just annual.
Yeah, I've got a, a local, uh, uh, what do you, a.
Nursery.
Nursery certified arborist.
Yeah.
So he's not a landscape architect, but certified arborist that I'll, I'll contact. He's here in Toppets County. So I will, uh, pass this by him and, uh, rework that list.
Okay. All right. And, um, if you want to do something other than trees, it might be worth finding, um, somebody who's not just an arborist. Arborists are fantastic at picking out just the right tree for you. When it comes to perennials and shrubs and annuals, there might be other people who have, um, more knowledge.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop your screen sharing email. Brent has had his hand up for a little bit. Brent?
Sure. Uh, I'm going to start with a quick one, just an easy one. Just, uh, add two cents on the sign. The angle chosen for the sign does a really good job of possibly catching people coming from east. But almost completely turns it parallel away from the people arriving from the west.
Yeah, I see what he's saying.
Right. You're gonna, you're gonna get it coming up the ramp. You're gonna get it if you're coming like from the, from the mall or from here there. But if you're coming like kind of Huga Heights this way, yeah, you don't catch it.
So they're coming from Huga Heights, locals. They'll know it's there. If you have more of a chance to turn around, they could see the, I understand your point, but they could see the Taco Bell then and have an opportunity to turn into the lot after spotting it. I think at least at the BZA meeting, you expressed the concern that coming from like Lansing to Huga Heights, there really isn't an opportunity to make that turnaround to then go to Taco Bell if you miss it.
Are you planning on, so there is, and maybe this is a question for Mike too, because I know it's a, a planned sign area. There is that big, um,
They can't.
There's no space on that. Okay.
Yeah. So this is a separate part and parcel.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Even though in, in, as, as Mike.
That's part of the experience. Okay.
Is historically, we were part of the plaza, but this is separate part and parcel. We don't have an opportunity to be on that.
On their pilot?
Okay.
Oh, you don't.
We're not, we're not.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah. So this has been separated out and so we don't, we're not associated.
Them about. That doesn't make sense. Cause you're drawn to their other people. Econology and Monroe have.
This is for them too.
Yeah. Those are all kind of like an out parcel. Yeah.
Was there a Pizza Hut on there?
Oh, I don't.
I just don't remember. It's been gone for, yeah.
No, but I'd never go to Pizza. So, but it's.
Was Friendly's ever on there? Cause they're, they're their own mansion.
I don't, again, that's above my pay grade. So we could certainly add that.
I was just curious. Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead, Brent.
Yeah. So now on to the, my usual topic area, which is stormwater management. I, Matt, I don't mean to be, uh, critical, but I don't think that 45,000 square feet is less than an acre.
But it's area of disturbance, not, not, not lot size.
Well, first of all, your, your, your says area of disturbance, 45,000 on C6. And then, um, so.
Well, it's, it's only 1.3 acres total and I would pick it.
Are you looking at, you're looking at the, um, Are you looking at, you're looking at the, okay, you are looking at, on the EAF, it says, total acreage, 1.29, area to be deserved, .99.
Looking on sheet, sheet C6 on the drawing says.
Brent, I see what you're talking about, and we're gonna recalculate that. I think that's an error, because I think what happened is, Drasman just added the existing area and the proposed area, but that, that proposed area is inclusive of some of the existing area. But I'll repopulate that, because when you physically look at 1.3 acres, you look at the area disturbance, we are, we're like, two-thirds of the site, and not certainly the whole site. So I will, I will recheck that and make sure that we are under the acre of disturbance.
Okay, so I'd like to then comment on what appears to be, in my looking through the wording, that is, the presentation suggests that because there's roughly 24,000 air, uh, square feet of current impervious, and there's gonna be 24,000 of new impervious, that they're coincidental, and therefore, they are, what would I call it, they're, so they're not accumulative.
They're not accumulative. No, they're not accumulative at all. The entire site will be, the, the, the limits of those gray lines will, including the existing asphalt surfaces, nothing will be reused or milled and resurfaced. It'll be brought down to base, base course elevation, and it'll all be new surface, and that new surface area really is at 24,850.
Right, so that's my, you, you just answered my point, is, it's not redevelopment, because if you're tearing it all out, there's no credit for redevelopment, once it's removed.
But still, we're under an acre, so we're, we're out of this speediness program, but certainly have to deal with, we still have to deal with, you know, proper engineering management of that stormwater. And in existing condition, there's still 24,800 square feet of impervious surface that has been traditionally drained for the last 30 years on the site.
All the more reason, now's the opportunity, now's the time to do something about it. So I think that you'll, you'll have to do your recalculation. I'm assuming that this wasn't intended to get final approval tonight, Mike?
No, we, no, we always, I mean, we always keep these up for two meetings, anyway. Or more.
This'll give, give us time for Matt and I to take a, you know, closer look at this. If it turns out that it's less than an acre, and we therefore don't trigger the SWIP minimum, I think that what we've recently reminded ourselves, just even at the last meeting, is, even if it's not a SWIP requirement, the village does require, has a policy to require a minimum of two of the green design standards to be incorporated into the plan, even if no other stormwater management is required. So.
I was just gonna say, we, we have some opportunities here to do some runoff reduction in water quality elements. There, there's, there's some areas here that I'm, that we can populate some of that, and whether we call it rain guards, or some bio-retention areas, we can certainly enhance our stormwater runoff here.
Yep. So, well, I guess the best thing to do is just get together with me, you know, between now and the next meeting, we'll try to figure that out.
Got it, agree.
Okay.
Anything else, Brent?
Just, I was gonna comment, when Yumela had offered her interest in seeing reduced impervious, the one, the one idea that she had was to eliminate a little bit of the impervious on the west end. I'm not suggesting that I think it's necessary, but if we were going to try to reduce one of the driveways, I would have tried to reduce or eliminate these, the driveway more to the east, so that the trucks, if, if there were trucks, big trucks coming in, or fire trucks, they could come in the easier way than the, the tighter way. But if it turns out that you're not looking to, it take, to utilize that runoff reduction, or that redu, uh, reduction in impervious, then it's an irrelevant comment. But I just thought that that one, you know, the other, the longer driveway, plus, I, I feel like that the intersection there in the corner of the ring road kind of act, the, kind of acts more like a regulated intersection instead of a driveway. So just, just food for thought on that. That's not like a, a request, that's just, you know, some ideas to think about.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's it, that's all I have.
Larry?
I'm good.
Pat? Lisa?
The only other thing I'm worried about is, as the mall is getting more successful, the whole traffic situation, which I think is a trustee issue, isn't it, to be periodically reviewing that whole intersection? Because I noticed the other day, because I come from the north always, and I want to turn left into this, to go to like Aldi, or Ace, or whatever. And there probably were eight cars waiting to come out the other day. So I think it's something that we need to bring up with the trustees, that I think we need to have, revisit our whole corridor as a village, because we're get, we want these businesses to not frustrate their customers, and want them to be happy and able to come and go. And it is frustrating, because people take risks then, and try, kind of push it. I would never do that, of course. But, you know, where it's, it's yellow, and maybe you shouldn't be going through it, because they're taking left. And I just think it's something we need to do. Do we need to talk to the trustees about that? Because that's not something we can.
That's nothing the trustees, I mean, it's, it's a DOT, the lighting and the timing.
But how do?
We'd have to reach out to them and see. So that was gonna be my comment, too, is, is there anything that, you know, theoretically, this will bring more business to?
Yes, I think it will.
Is it going to bring, you know, any more business than was there, when Pizza Hut was there? But either way, there's a lot more things there now.
Well, Pizza Hut hasn't done anything for so long.
But I don't know if there's a process to follow, to have the DOT.
Yeah, how, how does this work?
Timing on a.
I've been thinking about this.
Or just a pattern.
With every, I mean, that mall was dead for so long, and now it isn't. And so now, it's just different. And how do we kind of keep up with these changes?
Yeah.
I don't know what the process is.
You know how they put down, like, they, they track how many cars go through the intersection? And you know, also, there's many people walking, trying to cross the intersection.
Terrifies me.
It's crazy, because people are trying to make a left, and there's somebody trying to cross, and then.
Or even if you're trying to turn right, and they're, and you don't, I mean, if, if you don't really get really hyper vigilant, no, it should be a total stop when people walk.
Now, while the timing at that intersection for any walker is atrocious.
Yeah, yeah.
Day, any direction, it doesn't matter, it's terribly.
This is only gonna add to this, and I, I think it's just really time to do something about this. And I'm just, I want to know what we have to do to.
Reach out to Region 3 DOT over in Syracuse and request account.
Is that what it is?
Because the bridge is state-owned.
Is what?
The state.
Oh, state, I, yeah, I thought this whole.
I don't have an answer for you, but I will try to find one for you.
I really think it's important that we.
The knowledge is tall.
Yes, Region 3 in the Syracuse DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're in the Syracuse area, so we just reach out to our person there.
I suspect that they have some pretty recent counts there. They're, they're continuously taking counts every summer, so I bet they have some less than three-year-old data.
Well, maybe they need to take it during the school year, when the students come back.
Mike will reach out.
Has nothing to do with you, really. But it's just something I thought, okay, it's, it's just time.
Anything else, Lisa?
Nope.
Natalie?
No.
So, any final thing you want to share?
No, you guys covered everything, and they were very good about providing materials such as.
Respect, thank you very, very much.
I was gonna say, thank you, A, for coming in person to do your presentation, we appreciate that. Some people, some people who do these things are like, you know, five hours a driveway, so we don't always expect them to be here, but we do like, when you, at least we get to meet you face-to-face at least once, so.
At least once, it's nice.
But yeah, so between now and, you know, the next time, you know, we'll keep the public hearing open, we're not gonna.
We've got our list of, of things to answer, so we'll, we'll provide.
Does anybody?
With our responses.
Okay.
And then give that back to you guys, we'll work through that. And then.
I'll get you press information, you can let that come, see what.
Yeah, we'll work out, we'll work up some stormwater solutions for that. And certainly fix up our landscape and planning.
And maybe a sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk.
For the ADA thing, I think that would be great. I think that would be great.
Do we want to go over the short EAF tonight?
We don't.
So we can, we just.
We don't, I mean, he doesn't need to say, well, I guess he does.
We're here.
Yeah. Let's, let's go over, it just seems like the past few, there've been some changes to, and if we can, is this okay?
I didn't see anything.
If you go over, I don't have, it'd be part two and three.
That's okay.
If they set their changes on, they can make the changes for next meeting.
For now, in the next meeting.
I don't think so. I didn't find, oh, yeah, no, I didn't.
So, yeah, let, let's just go over it quick. Does the proposed action only involve legislative adoption of a planned local ordinance, administrative rule, or regulation? No. Does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency? Valuable and special permit in the BZA, so yes. Do you know, are these total acreages accurate here? So total acreage of the site is 1.29 acres, total acreage to be physically deserved, .99?
I'm gonna verify that.
Okay, yeah, so when you verify that, especially, if, if it does get updated, change it here and get us.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we're gonna.
Okay. All land uses that occur on, are adjoining, or near the proposed action, commercial?
I was even wondering if we should say other and say highway. It's right on the highway. Because, because, you know, I, and, and the reason I thought, say that is, was it's even more commercial, commercial, funny. And the signage and everything, it kind of helps to explain that.
Want to check it and?
Yes, and just say highway.
Or whatever you want.
Or Route 13, whatever.
Whatever the appropriate term is for that.
I'll make changes.
Is the proposed action a point of use under the zoning regulations? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Feel free to argue with me anytime I. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in, or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present, present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? Yes, which I think is great, by the way. Are the, any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? Yes. Does the proposed action meet or exceed State Energy Code requirements? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public-private water supply? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? Yes. Does the site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? No. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive or archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining with the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? Yes. What's the yes on that one?
Yeah, I was gonna say, why?
Is that automatic answer?
Did that auto-mobulate? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? No. Identify the typical habitat types that occur on, or are likely to be found on the project site, urban?
Oh, no, but if it, oh, adjoining a wetland, do we have to say wetland there?
Well, again, as John said, it, it was auto-populated, that means there's.
You don't need to.
I would say, right, they're not on it, they're adjacent to it. Right, and we're not, we're not in disturbances of importance, or it's, it's not an impact.
Hey, Brent, as we're talking about that, too, I don't, I don't, I know that there's various types of different drainage around Route 13. Is there anything, like, in that area that we need to worry about, or?
There is the culvert pipe under the, the deep ramp headed west, and, boy, I tell you, this isn't certainly Taco Bell's responsibility, but the whole, as the drainage, as, so that heads over across to the top side, and then down to the mall, and we kind of all are painfully aware of what's going on down there. And what happens on the old Pizza Hut side is that sometimes that culvert pipe isn't big enough, and it creates a nice little temporary pond on, right down in that corner. So I guess that's probably something I don't know if Matt's familiar with or aware of.
Yeah, we saw that at Bird Pass, so we're gonna address that.
And unfortunately, there's a nice sewer manhole right there in the corner, and a few years ago, the snow, somebody's snowplow had knocked the cover off, and that thing was a wide-open canyon for stormwater for a while. So it's just an area that I kind of keep an eye, every time I go over there, I kind of keep my eyes open on that little corner.
A lot of, a lot of the issues with the stormwater in that parking lot has to do with maintenance. A lot of the grids are covered up, and then it ends up backflying, and everything's all back someplace. One thing I would advise checking into, and this is only because we've gone through this before with the Econo Lodge, is who is responsible for that stormwater pipe that's underneath there, that actually runs, probably runs on your, on that property?
Yeah.
I would look that up in the deed, find out who's responsible, whether it is actually you are responsible, or whether it is actually Brick's. Because there was some wording in the Econo Lodge deed that we had to go through.
Were you part of that?
You were part of that?
No.
It was agreement. I would just check the, the deed and see who's responsible for that stormwater pipe.
It, it does run right across, it might be something just to look into.
Okay.
Fifteen.
Back to, back to the, the EAF. Fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal governments as threatened or endangered? No. Is the site located in the 100-year flood plan? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Yes. If yes, will the stormwater discharge move to adjacent properties? No. Will stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance systems? Yes. Does the proposed action include construction or any other activities that would result in the impounder of water or other liquids? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No.
Yeah, John.
Acres.
Yeah, so Mike, Mike took notes, but yeah, review acreage number three, we'll check other and add highway, or whatever it is to number five. Yeah, and Mike, we'll get you an updated.
I'll send that over.
And that way, we don't have to do this at another meeting in that way. Go ahead, Yumela.
Oh, yeah, and I was gonna say, one of the first questions was about compliance with our comp plan.
Yes.
I would say, if they put in a sidewalk, then absolutely, yes. But if there's no sidewalk, I would say it's not in compliance with comp plan.
Sidewalk's coming.
Excellent, love that.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess between now and then, you know, be in touch with Mike and Brent, and your own review, and, you know, go over the things, and if you're ready at the next meeting to go over stuff, I assume right now, there's probably not a ton of stuff, you can work with them, get on the agenda.
Catch right back up to you, and get back, and.
Get going.
You know, we should be able to address this stuff.
So everything, what's your target date for opening, if everything goes according to plan?
Well, once, once we get approvals, and, and they do have, right now, we're building one in Cortlandville. Seven months, I think, Mike said, from shovels in the year from 90 to 120 days.
Wow, oh, okay, fast.
Ninety to 120.
They did Cortlandville down there, that. Yeah, it's just about, okay.
Okay.
Terrific. Three to four months.
It's not a big building, really, it just.
I was gonna say.
It's not a big building, and it's a lot of site work associated.
I was gonna say, it seems like it's more site work, the building, I mean.
Well, you know, you know, he's gonna have to, you know, do the pre-demo survey.
The demolition, yeah.
Things happen down, I think, his walkthrough, you know, there might be some, it's of that process era.
Is that building, that old, the, I think it's like, well, 85, up to 85 is potentials.
Yeah, but for a special system? Great.
So they'll have to do a pre-demo survey for DOL, and, and do the right thing there, so.
Wow.
I'm, I'm the dirt guy, so I haven't been inside, but Mike was inside, and he was scratching at it, so. Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, no, this is what we do.
Okay, next item, and lead. Okay, next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
This is the report of the July 15th meeting of the trustees. There was initially a discussion about the mayor's email that he sent out as an alert on July 15th about having the system shut down and everything was discussion about that. The board voted to set a public hearing on the proposed solar law on August 19th at 7:35 PM. There were some, there was some discussion.
Damn it.
What's that?
No, I think we're just shuffling stuff around.
August 19th?
August 19th, because I have to wait for the 30-day GML.
Yeah, 7:35. There was some discussion, and I didn't, you know, take detailed notes, but some discussion regarding the planning board's dissatisfaction with the absence of a decommissioning plan. Deputy Mayor Carolyn Greenwald noted, I did write this down, that Lisa apparently didn't seem too upset about its absence. The mayor did not.
Oh, I think.
Well, that's not, so I'll, I'll talk about the letter that I sent to Ronnie when, when you're done with the trustee report, Jim.
I, I, I wrote that down because I, you know, it kind of surprised me, so I thought I'd.
It surprises me too.
That was what I said.
Yeah.
Since I was there and.
Yeah. Unless, unless I misheard, but.
Oh, you heard correctly, Jim.
Like, did not, you know, she said did not seem too upset. I mean, I did this by Zoom. The mayor and others, there was some discussion on this noted that laws can be amended if problems arise and that things are fluid. I think that was the term used.
What did he say?
Things are fluid.
Oh, fluid, okay.
And so if, you know, if there's problems with laws, they could, they can be amended. The board also voted to set a public hearing regarding a local law addressing illicit discharge activities into storms, whereas I think that was a local law. See, that's set for August 19th at 7:40 PM. Five minutes past the public hearing on the proposed solar law. And they adjourned at 7:40 PM. If Natalie or Susan wants to elaborate, please feel free, but this is what I put down.
That sounds good to me, Jim.
Could I, so I'm going to be attending the, or I'm going to be on debt for covering the Board of Trustees in August. So they do have one on August, a meeting on August the 5th though as well, correct? Which, next Monday or? Okay, but the public hearing is not until now, the 19th?
Correct.
Now, the reason, reasoning for that was I had to turn in the GML 239.
Right.
And I needed at least 30 days, but I had to have a final draft.
So they don't hold the public hearing open for more than one time? Is that correct?
Typically not.
Okay. Because I had hoped to attend in person, but I will be away, I will be out of town for the 19th. I was hoping to go on the 5th, but, okay. Because, yeah, well, I wanted to talk about this in other business, I guess, so.
I mean, you can, you can still bring it up, but we, as other business.
Yeah, on the 5th, I could do that.
Better, Jim?
Yeah, that, that, that was it. And, you know, for the other folks who were there, I mean, I don't think I misheard, but, you know, I know the acoustics on, on this aren't ideal, but I don't think I did. So that's it.
Yeah, I'll share this here, other than other, under, other business, because this correlates to that, or we can call it other business, whatever. So after the last board meeting, I did send an email to Ronnie. I didn't send it to everybody because I just didn't think it was appropriate. It was also part of a bigger discussion of other things, so. But I did let him know that, and I quote, specifically Lisa and myself commented that we still have concerns about how the decommissioning plan portions of the local law had been modified beyond what we had initially discussed at the joint meeting. Other planning board members have shared their suggestions and concerns regarding decommissioning at previous meetings. I did mention that I appreciated the compromises that we had in other sections, and that's what I was hoping for. And then I said, in its current form, neither myself or Lisa supported. I also offered to talk to him and Carolyn the next day because we had a meeting. Neither of them expressed interest in discussing that, so.
Oh.
But flat out, I, I don't support the way that's written. So there's that and, yeah.
So what I wanted to ask everybody is since I do plan to go on the 5th in person and I, I had hoped that it would be the public hearing, but since it's not, I will bring it up in the public comment period. So Susan, Kathy, understand that. I was wondering whether anyone else feels as strongly as Mike and I do? Or not?
Yamilah, raise your hand.
Yamilah? You do, yes?
I absolutely feel incredibly strongly that decommissioning plans are super important.
Yep. I mean, I, I mean, I do too. We've talked about it many times.
I guess what I'm saying is, is it unanimous that we as a board? Because, well, and it doesn't need to be, but, but the thing that I'm not understanding is, I, I think the original objective, the only thing that I can remember was, first of all, I remembered there was this thing of what incentive is the planning board providing for solar? And we're saying that's not our job to provide incentives to, for people to have solar. First of all, not everybody as a village resident is going to be able to have solar put on their house or wherever they want to put it. So that's number one. Number two is, our job is to protect the village. And I don't see how taking decommissioning out is protecting the village. In fact, it's putting a burden on the village 15 years. I mean, some of these materials are not benign materials. They are hazardous waste and they will have to be disposed of appropriately when the time comes, like asbestos. Now, when you have asbestos in your home and you have to replace, get rid of it, doesn't, does the village take care of that for you? Oh, no, they do not. And so I think it's part of homeownership and I'm just not understanding. Now, I think from the original thing that I recall, there was resistance to people having to, too much regulation, too complicated. Well, the other thing was, I guess it was a cost, because I know for tier three, there's a bond. So just have them file and take the responsibility and acknowledge that they will be responsible for a decommissioning plan. I don't care if they post a bond. It's just that should there ever be a situation where somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to, we have no recourse. Our code officer can't do a thing. And I just don't understand why we would expose the village. I guess.
And I think one of the, one of the comments was to that point too. I think, you know, oh, well, well, there, right, there's code or there's, there's stuff in local law in the code about how things can be enforced. And I think that for small things, that's fine. And I think that it's been proven more frequently, more recently, that what's there is inadequate.
I will just make a comment that a decommissioning plan without a bond.
Is useless.
Is useless.
Okay.
It basically will revert to what is currently in the proposed local law, that we can say 30 days, you have 30 days to impose your decommissioning plan, and then what happens when they don't? Then the village can step in and then the village can do it and the village can assess it to their taxes. But without a bond or assurance that they will complete it, we're kind of back at where the proposed local law is now.
I think that, though, it's not necessarily just, it, it hasn't always just necessarily been about enforcement. And I don't, I think that we talked about enforcement quite a bit, but just, and we've talked about this with many other things too, general awareness.
So do you, can you think of anything that we could do to compromise in this situation?
I think there's plenty of, tons of space, just like we did with other items in the solar law for there to be compromised. The general feeling I get from the Board of Trustees is that it's.
But I mean, specifically, for example?
Yeah, remove the, go ahead.
What about, so what is your primary concern for who would need a decommissioning plan? An enforceable decommissioning plan with bond? We're no tier three.
That's.
And no one has a problem with tier.
Well, I think the ground mounted are of concern.
Okay, for residential and.
Yes, for residential, for, because I have seen ground mounted things destruct. And, you know, there will be people who then say, oh, well, you know, and I just, I think it's bad.
So potentially just ground mounted, we want to, you want to address ground mounted decommissioning?
I think if it's on your roof and it's probably going to get addressed at some point, I don't know. I would like it everywhere, but I would be able to compromise with just ground mounted.
Yeah, I, I think the difficulty that we had is we were trying to put it either on a tier one, tier two or tier three. And so tier three, clearly it's a commercial space. We have that. The, the thing that got really sticky is that tier one is usually the smallest homeowner, but it's also including large farms.
Yeah, well, that was the farm thing.
And that was the part that, that got sticky. We, we put this decommissioning language together with tier one so that we could cover those large farms. And people got really, even though we said it didn't apply to individual homes with their roof mounted, people still got very upset at the idea that they would have to do this as kind of decommissioning. I wonder, Lisa, you said something really smart before. You said, you know, with asbestos, you know, we have all these regulations. Well, one of the asbestos regulations is that under a certain amount of square feet, it's very tiny, under a certain amount of square feet of asbestos, you can remove yourself and dispose of yourself over, so like, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of lead, of lead, of lead paint. So if you have like a door frame, basically a door frame, you can remove and dispose of on your own. Anything bigger than a door frame, you have to have remediated. I wonder if including some sort of language that talks about scale. So we're not talking about tier one or tier two or tier three, we're just talking about larger scale, if they would then accept a piece that has decommissioning talking about larger scale projects?
Well, I don't know. I can't think.
Tier one and two do have scale parameters to them.
But they're big.
They're big.
Yeah.
But, and also that would fluctuate over time, because one piece just continued to get smaller.
Smaller and smaller. But of course, the other thing is, is the technology too, is, you know, at some point, I mean, we're going to have solar shingles and all of this stuff. I don't know, but people have got to be decommissioning that responsibly, just like we have to, when we do a roof now, if it's the asphalt stuff, you've got to pay your hazardous waste disposal fee. I mean, it's just part of the deal and this is part of the deal, just like anything else when you own a home. I just don't understand. But so how, the bond, so I, I wanted to go back and look, I guess, at what, what our law says about, and every time I try to print it out, my computer freezes. There's something about Jody sent me. I've tried downloading it, changing it, whereas I brought it here somewhere.
Go ahead, Jim.
Question, just probably, Natalie's probably the only one who might know this, but just order of magnitude, what's the cost of a bond?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to remember. It's a percentage of the something.
The bond required, I thought, was the.
Now, I'm not sure I've got the latest version because nothing ever, the pot looks.
I don't know if we ever put a percentage in there though. I mean, there's a default from whatever was in the model law.
I think there's also.
In an amount sufficient to ensure the good faith performance of the terms and conditions of the permit issued pursuant heretofore and to provide for the removal and restorations of the site subsequent to removal. And the Village of Lansing is the assignee in an amount approved by the Village of Lansing.
That, that wasn't the question I was asking.
Under B, the amount of the bond or security shall be 115% of the cost of removal and site restoration.
Okay. No, what I was asking is, just if, if, if it is answerable, what is the cost of getting the bond? I mean, just like what's, it's like.
I don't know, like how, like a cashier's check costs like $5 or something. I don't know what it would cost to get a bond. I also know that Jody had noted the additional administrative work required if we have a number of decommissioning bonds on the books.
Yeah, I'm not against figuring out some inventive way to have something, you know, that isn't a financial burden on people, but still.
Gives them the responsibility.
At least gives them the responsibility, at least gives them the information that, you know, I know whether or not, you know, from Bolton Point, I know whether or not that the pipe that leads, you know, into my house from, you know.
Is your responsibility.
Is lead or not, you know? I have that awareness now because they have a process in place.
Well, I'm hoping, I really, I guess I'm like a dog with a bone and I'm really not ready to let this go yet. Because I just think it's a mistake to just take what I, I feel it will be a burden on the village and I think maybe it won't happen for 15 years, but, you know, it's just not what I feel I'm charged to do as a planning board member. That's all. So I just wanted to know if I can carry the flag or not on this, because I'm willing to do so. And see if we can come up with something and I can just, but I don't, I'd like to delay the, the going to law until we figure something out that's perhaps. Because I think the last time, since I've been on the board for what, 14 years, the last time that the planning board made a suggestion to the Board of Trustees and we were over written, it was for the carve out of A1 from the PDA. And I still think that was a mistake. And it's been 14 years. So, you know, maybe 14 years from now, somebody will be looking at this and say, that was a mistake, wasn't it? You know, now and again. I mean, if you think it's totally dumb, I, I won't.
No, I think you shouldn't, I think you should, the Board of Trustees know your feelings. It sounds like there's consensus among the planning board.
Okay. I just didn't want to misrepresent anyone. Okay, good.
Okay. Other items, other under business, review landscape plan for Northeast Pediatrics.
Well, like that was that one.
Yeah, that's.
I thought this was, I, I thought this was the Taco Bell and I was getting.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, you were like, where is that?
I don't see a landscape.
So I think there's two things. I think that we need a, a, a more.
A labeled one at least.
Something that's, you know, much more.
Professional.
Professional than, than this. Are the, beyond that, the planting plan is the second page.
Yeah.
Again, not my area of expertise. Are these things? I know we had discussed this with them before, but do they still look appropriate or should things?
Well, what happened to all of the, weren't they going to put a bunch of somethings along, you know, along the road, like it's the, the soda.
Yeah, you just can't.
They were doing something along this row.
Here. Well, it wasn't, it was along this here.
Yes. It was, they were going to use.
Between them and the mall.
They were going to use it as a buffer between them and the mall.
Yeah, what happened to that?
Maybe that's what the squiggle line.
That might be what that is, I just, I'm not sure.
Well, I need a little, I don't see.
I think that's probably the squiggle line.
But I, that's not, but.
This is, the mall is here.
But, but I, but they.
Trip hammer is here.
No, we need a, we need a night, so.
But I don't, I don't see, I don't see any trees on this thing.
Well, these, these, these green.
Would that grasses?
Yeah.
I think, all right, we're proving the point that we need.
Right, so Mike, can, is this from Hope, or I'm not sure who it's from? Can you maybe pass along an example of what we've gotten from even, you know, like for Taco Bell tonight, right? Just a, something that's easier for us to see that specifically calls out this species here, 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 and here.
And perhaps they could label it as northeast P D A, so north, south, east, and west?
And a date.
And a road and a date?
And a date.
I know their, their budget is not as wide as Taco Bell's, but it has to be more than.
Yeah, it has to be, like, I, we need to know, right?
They have some other.
These things here, what is that gonna be? What's that gonna be? What's that gonna be? What's that gonna be? I mean, you know. It doesn't, right, it doesn't have to be a full engineer stamped thing from, like, Taco Bell has, but at least something that's clear for us to see has, has the date, has, you know, the directional indication on it, and what species are going where.
Yeah, like you and I spoke, I had received it, so I just sent it along. I'd take your comments.
What does this mean?
It's a consolation on page two, whether their list of plants, all the lists, all the plants that are listed are appropriate.
Okay, that, that was my question, thank you. Because.
They're, they're good.
Yeah.
They're solid choices. Again, the maple might be at a spot where it gets salt, we don't know, because we don't know where it is, but, but they're all appropriate, we just don't know where they are.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, you know, if they have that information. Um, what was your question? What's delivery?
Oh, yeah, what's delivery?
It's like where delivery vehicles park when they come to drop stuff off.
Like med supplies and stuff.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that they get smaller, smaller trucks than you would get at like, you know, yeah, like Tops or, you know.
But what, is this like a specialized parking area that they're putting in for the delivery? I mean, why is.
No, I think it's just, it's just a flat area where they can.
The label.
Not legal, not legally have a car park.
You know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's labor and delivery.
And I see they're putting in a sign, they're putting a sign in, did you notice that?
They have not come in for.
Well, Mike, there it is.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, no, pardon.
Okay.
Sign down here.
What are those?
Oh, and then here's ease.
You know what those are?
Yeah, that's the ease mat.
Like stick.
Okay, well, that settled that.
Okay, any other comments on that?
No.
Okay. Uh, other people, some of the people, right?
Every time I go by the alcohol, alcohol.
Oh, no.
They're out for bid. Oh, I know, but they still need to mow their lawn. It's like tumbleweed over there, it looks awful.
Jody and I have both been trying to get ahold of who's responsible for it, and you get nothing back from the source.
So maybe you need to go back to the article, the people that are taking the proposals, maybe you need to contact them.
I think it's no mo me, you know what I mean? No mo month.
Butterfly Habitat?
Well, I know.
I'd have to go back to the article.
I didn't understand either. Well, it's just that it does set up critters and stuff. Yeah, that's the.
And it looks awful. I mean, honestly.
I can't even live with a kind of field approach, but it's just not.
No, I can't.
It's not good in a commercial environment, near restaurants, to have.
No, I know, it just looks really bad, and I'd rather see a for sale sign out there, it'd make me feel better, but there's no for sale sign.
Well, hopefully somebody will come up with a.
Oh, I'm sure one of the local, the few that there are are probably gonna bid on it, like cars or something like that, or what's the other one?
I don't know.
Hours or.
I think they said August seventh was the decision.
Yeah, I'll have to go back to that article, I saw that, yeah. So that would be helpful. Yeah, hopefully somebody will take it over and it won't go to total waste.
What else?
That's it. I was gonna complain about the mall parking lot, and I went over to take pictures today, and they must have filled in holes like on Friday. So funny.
Um, Lisa?
No.
Jim?
No.
Yamilah?
Yep.
No.
Something like, I mean.
I'd ask with you, I really don't.
Really?[1630.12]